Now, we need. Oh, yeah, well, I got a vote. All in favor, just raise your hand. To, I guess Melanie, I, two in favor of this, going to this. Are you in favor of the meeting? Wait a minute. Are you in favor of the meeting, Kathy? Raise your hand.
Yes, I did raise my hand.
Oh, you're frozen out. All right, we're, we're, we're in. Meeting, we're in meeting.
Okay.
What's the next one?
I'll make a motion. Public hearing.
I'll second it. Aiden, second it. All is in favor, raise your hand. Okay, Kathy, I see you're going to, Ernie, you in favor? Raise your hand. Ernie's gone. Melanie?
There is.
Your hand's off screen, but I think I see your thumb there. Okay, we're, we're in here. All right, good. We're in the hearing. Hearing is now open. Did you have anything to say in the beginning, Anthony?
No, sir.
Right. Purpose of this meeting is to go over the articles that are on the warrant for our meeting which is coming up. What I propose to do is start with Article sixteen, since we did the first sixteen articles back in March. And I will read the article and then just ask if there are questions. If you have questions, that's the time to ask them. If there are no questions, we'll just go on to the next article. Probably look through one of my colleagues. Give me a break, because we have a lot of articles to go through. You all ready? We got public online, Anthony, besides the people I see here?
This is the whole group thus far.
Okay. Article sixteen.
Linda Bacon has a question.
It's not a question so much as would everybody mute? Because I'm getting a lot of like movement of paper and clanging noises coming across.
Sure, I, I, I'll mute everyone and then I'll unmute you, Michael.
I can do it myself, but okay.
There you go.
All right. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to change the office of road commissioner from elected to appointed effective as of March twenty twenty one annual town meeting. Thereafter, a single road commissioner will be appointed by the select board for a one-year term. Any questions on that article? Raise your hand, because you're muted. Hey, none on that. Article seventeen. To see if the town will authorize the board of select persons to act on the following. To spend an amount not to exceed one-fourth of the approved budget for twenty twenty between January one twenty twenty one and the date of the regular twenty twenty one town meeting. Vote to accept any and all overdrafts and balances that have lapsed and are not otherwise directed to the undesignated fund. Any questions or comments on that one? Seeing none, we want the next one. Article eighteen. I'm gonna move this keyboard here. It'll hit it. Okay, Article eighteen. See if the town will set Friday, September fourth, twenty twenty, as the date of the twenty twenty property taxes are due. For taxes paid after September fourth, twenty twenty, interest will be charged at the rate of one percent per annum higher than the interest rate on the tax anticipation note. The T A N ten. Interest will continue until the tax and tax lien are paid in full. Additionally, to see if the town will set the interest rate to be paid to the town on taxes paid and later abated at two percent per annum, interest will accrue from the date the tax payment to the date the abated amount is refunded to the taxpayer. Note, the maximum rate allowed by the state treasurer on late taxes is nine percent. Any questions? Comments? Next one. Article nineteen. To see if the town will authorize the board of select persons to enter into a contract with the Friends of the Belgrade Public Library for up to three thousand dollars to be paid to by the Friends to the town for plowing and mowing services to be formed by the, performed by the town at the li, at the library property on Depot Road. Questions or comments? Yes, Dan? Yeah, no, no, okay. No questions, then. We'll go on to the next one. Article twenty. To see if the town will appropriate revenues from the following sources in twenty twenty to reduce the twenty twenty tax commitment. First audit, first item, vehicle excise tax, twenty nineteen received nine, nine hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-one. Twenty twenty proposed eight hundred and fifty thousand. Boat excise ninety-eight hundred fifty-three dollars. Twenty twenty proposed eighty-five hundred. Plumbing fees. Twenty nineteen, fifty-four hundred. Twenty twenty five thousand. Town agent fees nineteen thousand one hundred eight. Twenty twenty eighteen thousand. Interest and cost fees. Twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty. Twenty twenty, twenty thousand even. Cable franchise freeze fees. Forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight, twenty twenty, forty-seven thousand. Bank interest thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five, twenty twenty, seventy-five hundred dollars. Library mo, plow contract. Twenty nineteen, nothing. Twenty twenty proposed three thousand. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, go on to the next one. Article twenty-one. To see if the town will appropriate.
I think Melanie may have a, a comment. Melanie, let me unmute you.
Wave your hand or something, Melanie, so I can see you. But wave it on screen. You have something, Melanie?
Yeah, just on that last one, Mike. Sorry, let me get back. So, the only thing I had, just it, the numbers were superimposed when you read them on the cable franchise fees. So it's just forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight. I think we just flip flopped them. Not a big deal.
I don't think so, but anyway, yeah, it's the night, the, the twenty nineteen cable freeze was forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight and proposed for twenty, next, the twenty twenty is forty-seven thousand. Okay?
That's it.
Hey, thank you. Article twenty-one. To see if the town will appropriate forty-five hundred dollars from the undesignated fund and raise an appropriate five hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars for a total sum of five hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars. To support the costs associated with the municipal operations and administrative activities. Itemized requirements are as follows. Select board, twenty nineteen, actual ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. Twenty twenty proposed fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five. Board of appeals, twenty nineteen, actual none. Twenty twenty proposed fourteen hundred thirty-eight. Administration, twenty nineteen, three hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-five. Twenty twenty nine, three ninety-seven, five seventy-seven. That's three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven. Town manager, hang on just a minute. Town manager. Twenty nineteen, actual ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight. Twenty twenty proposed one hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine. Code enforcement officer, planning inspector. Twenty nineteen, actual forty-one thousand, six on, six hundred forty-five thousand. Twenty twenty proposed forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight. Planning board. Twenty nineteen, twelve hundred, twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Twenty twenty, fifty-seven hundred. Hearings and elections, twenty nineteen, forty-eight hundred, six, six, forty-eight hundred, sixty-seven dollars. Twenty twenty proposed ten thousand, four hundred fifty. Town historian, twenty nineteen, actual four hundred dollars. Twenty twenty proposed four hundred dollars. For totals for twenty nineteen of five hundred and six thousand, eight hundred twenty-three. Twenty twenty proposed five hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars. If I had been saying proposed at the top, I meant actual on the twenty nineteen. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Article twenty-two. See if the town will appropriate three thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars in twenty, in twenty nineteen, late dog fees. Late dog license fees from the undesignated fund and raise an appropriate two hundred two hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred six, forty-six dollars for some of two hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars to support the following divisions of public sa, of the public safety department. With any unexpected balance from the fire and rescue department to lapse back into the fire and rescue department's reserve account. Emergency management director. Twenty nineteen, actual zero, twenty twenty proposed three hundred. Fire and rescue department. Twenty nineteen, actual two hundred, one thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. Twenty twenty proposed twenty oh seven, twenty, two hundred and seven thousand, seventy-one dollars. Municipal streetlights, twenty nineteen, actual eighty-seven hundred and two dollars. Twenty twenty proposed ten thousand dollars. Animal control officer. Eighteen nineteen, actual ninety-six hundred, ninety-one dollars. Twenty twenty proposed thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Health officer, twenty nineteen, actual four hundred dollars. Twenty twenty proposed four fifty, four hundred and fifty. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go on. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will raise an appropriate not forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars to support public safety answering call, answering point. Call answering seventy-two hundred, fifty-five dollars. Dispatch services for fire and rescue, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six. And rural law enforcement dispatch estimated at twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-two. Fees for fire, police, rescue calls. Comments or questions? Seeing none. Article twenty-four. To see if the town will raise an appropriate the sum, a sum not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to support the employment of a second full-time firefighter slash EMS. Note, the cost, the cost to Belgrade taxpayers will be twenty-five thousand should Rome voters also approve a warrant article to share in a cost full-time firefighter EMS. Rome's approval would provide a seven-day service for at least ten hours a week for medical calls in both communities. If Rome voters oppose the warrant article, Belgrade taxpayers would fund the full cost of the firefighter EMS and would respond to calls in Rome only, only under extraordinary ser, extraordinary circumstances. Rome did to vote to approve that, by the way. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Article twenty-five. To see if the town will appropriate up to twenty-three thousand dollars from the undesignated fund to convert Belgrade streetlights to LED. Doing so will reduce the streetlight electric cost by an estimate of sixty-eight percent. Conversion would pay for itself in less than three years. Questions or comments on that one? Seeing none. Nothing coming in from the outside, Anthony? Anybody on the outside signaling?
I think Melanie may have a question. Hold on.
No, I don't mean Melanie. I mean, and people that you're monitoring.
Yes, I'm monitoring. There have been no questions from, uh, from the outside. I'm trying to unmute.
Melon, you have some? Unmute her, please. Melanie?
Yep. So, is the estimated cost eighty-six or sixty-eight percent? I have eighty-six on mine.
Yes, it's eighty-six percent.
I meant eighty-six if I said something else. I apologize.
Okay, I was just checking.
Thank you, Melanie. Next article, twenty-six. To see if the town will raise an appropriate one hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and appropriate twenty thousand dollars from the public works, road, maintenance and paving capital reserve for a total of one hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five for general road maintenance with any unexpected, unexpended balance to lapse back into the public works, road, maintenance and paving capital reserve account. The current balance of the public works, road and maintenance and paving capital reserve is four hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Article twenty-seven. See if the town will raise an appropriate five, excuse me, raise an appropriate three hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars for general plowing, sanding and salt for town roads. Any unexpect, unexpended balance to lapse back into the public works, road, maintenance and paving capital reserve account. Current balance in the public works, road, maintenance and paving capital reserve is four hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. And that breaks down to plowing and sanding. Twenty nineteen, actual two hundred forty thousand, five hundred twenty-six. Twenty twenty proposed two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven. Sand and salt, twenty nineteen, actual hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred twenty-five. Twenty twenty proposed one hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred. Totals, twenty nineteen, three fifty-nine and fifty-one dollars. Twenty twenty proposed three seventy-five, five ninety-seven. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will raise an appropriate eight hundred, eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Appropriate sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty from this income of the cemetery trusts. Appropriate twelve hundred from the cemetery capital reserve. And appropriate twenty-five hundred from the undesignated fund. For a total of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars to support total costs of operations, maintenance of the Belgrade cemeteries for twenty twenty. Itemized requirements are as follows. And could you read those for me? Put Ernie on. Did you follow? I need to take a little break. Ernie, can you read those itemized items on twenty-eight? How about you, Melanie? Anybody hear me? They're both muted. Anthony, would you read those for me, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to unmute one of the others, so.
I unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go, go for it, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, personnel, services and contracts. Personnel is nineteen, two eighty-one. Twenty nineteen, actual, and twenty twenty is zero. Services and contracts. Mine's a little screwed up here, but it's six hundred, six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two nineteen, actual. And three thousand, nine hundred and seventy, two twenty, proposed. Supplies and materials. Four thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, two nineteen, actual. Six thousand, three hundred and fifty, two twenty, proposed. Equipment repairs. Six thousand, three hundred and seventy-two. Actual in twenty nineteen and proposed for twenty twenty is eleven thousand, thirty dollars. Purchases, actual in twenty nineteen was two thousand, fifty-seven. And twenty twenty proposed is three thousand. Unclassified, zero in twenty nineteen. And proposed for twenty twenty is two thousand, two hundred and fifty. Flowers, two thousand, seven hundred and three in twenty nineteen. And proposed for twenty twenty is two thousand. For a total in twenty nineteen of forty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four. And proposed for twenty twenty is twenty-eight thousand, six hundred. Right? Article twenty-nine.
Wait, questions or comments on, on twenty-eight? No, seeing none.
That's why, that's why I'm not the tutor. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will appropriate thirty thousand dollars from the facilities slash cemetery truck replacement reserve and appropriate up to forty-five thousand from the undesignated fund for a total sum not to exceed seventy-five thousand to purchase a one-ton truck to replace the current two thousand eight model.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. I'll go, I'll do the next one. Article thirty. I'll do this one. Kathy, thank you.
Yes.
To see if the town will designate, designate a proportion of town property on map zero seven slash lot five, uh, zero, five nine B. Adjacent to Pramago Grove Cemetery for future cemetery growth. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Article thirty-one. To see if the town will increase rates for cemetery lots and services to be the following, two hundred dollars for a cemetery lot for a town resident, four hundred and fifty dollars for a non-resident. Four hundred and fifty for a full burial on weekday and five hundred on weekend, a holiday. Hundred and fifty for cremation, burial on weekday and two, two hundred and fifty thousand on weekend, a hol, a holiday. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Article thirty-two. Another long list. To see if the town will appropriate six hundred, six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the undesignated fund. Appropriate three thousand dollars to be received from the Friends of the Belgrade Public Library and raise an appropriate two hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-six for total sum of two hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-six. To support the town's maintenance of the following facilities. Kathy, you are helping again.
Fund is, uh, eighty, in twenty nineteen was eighty-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Proposed for twenty twenty is a hundred and forty-seven, two hundred dollars. Center for All Seasons. Um, twenty nineteen, actual was twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy. Proposed for twenty twenty is nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty. North Belgrade Community Center. Actual in twenty nineteen was five thousand, four hundred and six, seven, sixty-four. Is that right? Or do I have those juxtaposed? Anyway, proposed for twenty twenty is seven thousand, four hundred and ten. Garage. Actual for twenty nineteen was three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three. And proposed for twenty twenty is three thousand four hundred. Sultan San Chen. Actual for twenty nineteen was one thousand, sixty-seven. And proposed for twenty twenty is one thousand, one hundred and fifty. Lakes Fire Station. Seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty in twenty nineteen. And proposed for twenty twenty is six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five. The Depot Fire Station in twenty nineteen was three thousand, ninety-two dollars. Proposed for twenty nineteen is three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. North Belgrade Fire Station. In uh, twenty nineteen was three thousand, fifty-nine dollars. Proposed for twenty twenty is four thousand, sixty-five. Transfer Station in twenty nineteen was thirteen, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, proposed for twenty twenty is nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Parks was six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven in twenty nineteen. And proposed is six thousand, nine hundred dollars for twenty twenty. Dalton Road Properties were four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars in twenty nineteen. And proposed for twenty twenty is ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. History House. In, uh, twenty nineteen was two hundred and three dollars. And the proposal for twenty twenty is three hundred and twenty-five dollars. The town office for twenty nineteen was eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And proposed for twenty twenty is ten thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. The former town office was one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars in twenty nineteen. And proposed for twenty twenty is zero dollars, as it has been sold. The library is, was three hundred and eighty-nine dollars in twenty nineteen and proposed is three thousand, five hundred dollars in twenty twenty. For a total budget of one hundred and seventy-one dollars, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars in twenty nineteen. And in twenty twenty is two, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six. Do you want to do that?
I'll do it, but first, any comments or questions or comments on that one? Seeing none. Yeah, I'll go as long as I can.
Okay, well.
Stand by, Kathy.
Okay.
Article thirty-three, to see if the town will appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from anticipated revenue from solid waste operations. Appropriate forty thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars from solid waste capital reserve and raise an appropriate two hundred, seven thousand, sixty dollars for a total request of two thou, uh, two hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Additionally, place up to five thousand dollars in unspent funds. Up, up, unspent funds up to five thousand in revenues and twenty-five thousand in solid waste capital reserve account with the balance lapsing into undesig, into the undesignated fund and/or revenue shortfall to be taken from solid waste capital revenue to cover the difference. The current balance of the solid waste capital reserve is one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Any, uh, oh, it says here, at the twenty, I should, the twenty nineteen budget raised, raised was two hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty. Twenty-nine, actual, twenty nineteen, actual is two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two. Twenty twenty request raise two hundred and seven thousand, sixty dollars. Appropriate thirty-five thousand and nothing in twenty nineteen. Appropriate sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty for totals of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty in twenty nineteen. And in twenty twenty, two hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Questions or comments on number thirty-three? Seeing none. Article thirty-four, if I can find it. Okay. Article thirty-four. To see if the town will raise an appropriate nine, and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to pay for general liability and casualty workers' compensation, unemployment and health reimbursement administration fees for municipal workers. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Article thirty-five. To see if the town will raise an appropriate, authorize, designate or release the collective sum of twenty-five thousand, sixty dollars as dictated by the following funds and trusts. To make available to the principal of Belgrade Central School the interest in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six dollars from the Robert A. Guptill Historical Fund for the promotion and association of history. To see if the town will raise an appropriate nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and appropriate seventy-three dollars from the Don C. Stevens Fund for a total of one thousand dollars to support an academic award from the town to the highest ranking Belgrade senior graduating in twenty twenty. Authorize the use of the Don C. Stevens income in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars to benefit the public schools in Belgrade for a total of five, twenty-five thousand, sixty dollars. Questions or comments on that article? Seeing none, we'll go to thirty-six. To see if the town will appropriate forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the undesignated reserve. from the Undesignated Reserve to support general assistance in the sum of four thousand dollars and Emergency Fuel Fund in the sum of seven hundred ninety nine dollars. Night twenty nine budget was sixty four, sixty four hundred fifty dollars. Actuals sixteen hundred fifty one. Twenty twenty request is four forty seven hundred ninety nine dollars. Questions or comments, please? Seeing none. We'll go on to article thirty seven. See if the town will raise and appropriate seven hundred and eighty dollars for traffic control for the following community events. Memorial Day, two hundred and sixty, July fourth, two hundred and sixty. Holiday Stroll, two hundred and sixty for a total of seven hundred and eighty. And of course, the first two of those items, Memorial Day and July fourth have been canceled this year. Not the, not the holidays, but the events. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Article thirty eight, see if the town will raise appropriate thirty two hundred dollars as Belgrade share of the twenty twenty operations maintenance costs for the reasons, three dams, Village Dam, Wings Mills Dam and Salmon Lake Dam. Total projected cost in twenty twenty equals eighty thousand dollars. Rome Share seventeen thousand nine, seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. Oakland, eleven thousand two hundred dollars. Sydney's forty four, forty, excuse me, sixty four hundred dollars. Mount Vernon, fifty six hundred dollars. The total cost, twenty thousand dollars is for ongoing annual maintenance of the dams and sixty thousand dollars to replace the wooden crib structure of the Wings Mill Dam controlling Long Pond's water level. Twenty nineteen budget is forty four thousand eight hundred dollars. Actual for twenty nineteen was forty four eight hundred. Twenty twenty requests thirty two hundred dollars. Questions or comments on that item? Seeing none. Article thirty nine, to see if the town will raise an appropriate fifty thousand dollars to pay, pay interest charges and costs associated with government anticipation note of a tan in twenty twenty. Twenty nineteen budget was fifty thousand. Actual was twenty seven thousand one hundred and seventy three. Twenty twenty request is fifty thousand. Comments or questions? Seeing none. Article forty. See if the road will raise an appropriate four hundred seventy eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars to pay the combined twenty twenty debt services followed, as follows. First year payment on a twenty nineteen road paving two-year bond. Twenty nineteen budget was zero, twenty nineteen actual zero, twenty twenty request is four hundred twenty eight thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. Fifth year payment on Town Office thirteen year bond. Twenty nineteen budget was forty nine thousand eight hundred ninety three. Twenty nineteen actual twenty forty seven, forty nine thousand eight hundred and seventy three. Twenty twenty request is forty nine thousand eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and ninety three. Questions or comments on that one? Seeing none. Article forty one, to see if the town will appropriate eighty six thousand three hundred and seventy, three hundred and thirty dollars from the proceeds of the sale of the former Town Office to repay the principal on the debt on the current Town Office. What are your comments? Where are my glasses? I can't see. Article forty two, see if the town will establish a maintenance garage capital reserve account to fund improvements to the garage. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Article forty three, to see if the town will appropriate from the Undesignated Fund the following amounts for the following purposes. Fire and Rescue Department Capital Reserve, fifty thousand dollars. Cemetery Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve, five thousand dollars. Fire and Rescue Department Building Capital Reserve, fifty thousand dollars. Maintenance, Maintenance Garage Capital Reserve, five thousand dollars for a total of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Current balances of these capital reserves are as follows. Fire and Rescue Department Capital Reserve is two hundred ninety five thousand nine hundred and thirty three. Capital Equipment Replacement Res, Cemetery Equipment Replacement Reserve Capital Reserve is fifteen thousand dollars. Fire and Rescue Department Building Capital Reserve, eighty thousand dollars. Maintenance Garage Capital Reserve, zero. Twenty nineteen, not applicable, twenty nineteen budget. Actual not applicable, twenty twenty request, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Article forty four, to see if the town will authorize, authorize the Board of Parks and Recreation to conduct fundraising to support capital and/or operating and programming costs for the Recreation Department. Fundraising revenues up to ninety five thousand dollars are hereby appropriated to the Undesignated, Undesignated Fund. Revenues above that amount are hereby appropriated to the Capital Reserve Account. Twenty nineteen budget was eighty five thousand. Actual was one hundred and eighty five, one hundred thousand, one hundred eighty five dollars. Twenty twenty request is ninety five thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Article forty six, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Select Persons to sell or otherwise, otherwise dispose of real estate acquired by the town through tax lien foreclosures process for non-payment of property taxes on such items on such terms and conditions as the Board deems to be in the town's best interest and in accordance with applicable, applicable state law. If approved, this article will remain in effect until repealed or replaced by future town meetings. Approval of this article will repeal prior town meeting action on Article fourteen from the twenty nine, from the nineteen ninety one actual town meeting warrant and from the fourth item in Article eighteen of the twenty eleven Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Note the language of the nineteen ninety one and two thousand eleven articles appears enlisted of perpetually, perpetua.
Perpetual.
Perpetu, I couldn't say it, thank you. Perpetual articles I included in the twenty nineteen annual report. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Yes.
We need to, Article forty five.
Read Article forty five. We skipped it?
Yeah, we.
Thank you, thank you, Melanie. I appreciate it. Forty five. Article forty five, to see if the town will vote to accept and expend any and all gifts, donations, pass-through funds, grants and any other funds that may be provided by individuals, business associations, charitable groups or other organizations that have not been listed in any other articles. If the Board of Select Persons deems, determines that the gifts, donations, pass-through fund, grants or other funds and their purposes are in the best interest of the town, if approved, this article will remain in effect until repealed or replaced by a future town meeting. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to, now we'll go to Article forty seven. See if the town will authorize select persons to sell or otherwise dispose of any item town-owned personal property with a value of twenty five hundred dollars or less. If the Board determines the town no longer needs the property and that its sale or disposal is in the town's best interest, such sale or disposal shall be by any legal and reasonable method. All proceeds from the sale or disposal shall be placed in the town's undesigned fund. Sale or disposal of personal property with a value greater than twenty five hundred dollars shall be required, shall require a specific town meeting vote related to the particular item. However, where the personal property in question is a town-owned vehicle or other piece of equipment that is being replaced and the town has previously voted to approve purchase of a replacement either through specific vote or through est, through establishment of an appropriate capital reserve fund, the Board is authorized to sell or trade in the existing vehicle or piece of equipment without an additional town vote regardless of its value. The town hereby appropriates and proceeds appropriates the proceeds of sale or trade-in and hereby authorize the Board to determine whether the proceeds or sale or other disposal shall be applied to the purchase price of the replacement vehicle or equipment placed in applicable capital reserve account previously established by the town vote or transferred to the town's Undesignated Fund. If approved, this article should remain in effect until repealed or replaced. Any questions or comments? I'm getting tongue-tied here. Okay, none. We'll go on to Article forty eight. Forty eight, see if the town will, will vote to repeal the third item in Article eighteen adopted as a perpetuity account at, at the twenty eleven Annual Town Meeting and take action annually to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of property taxes that are made prior to delivery of the actual tax commitment by the tax collector or by the assessor. Thirty six MRSA Section five oh six. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Forty nine, town will vote pursuant to thirty six MRSA Section five oh six to authorize the town, authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of property taxes prior to the delivery of the tax amendment to the tax collector by assessors without payment of interest. Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Fifty, that was just forty nine, wasn't it? Yes, it was.
Yes.
Article fifty, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Select Persons to expend money from the Undesignated Fund to pay refunds related to approved property tax abatements and any required interest. This authority remains in effect until repealed or replaced. Note, if approved, this article modifies and replaces Article eighteen, fifth item adopted at the twenty eleven Annual Town Meeting. Any questions or comments? Here. Seeing none. Article fifty one, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Select Persons to expend fifteen thousand dollars or less for town-approved projects with purchases without the need of competitive bidding or request or request for proposals process. If the town-approved expense will be more than fifteen thousand dollars, the Board shall advertise a competitive bidding or public RFP request for proposals process and the Board shall determine winning bid or proposal. This authority shall remain in effect until repealed or replaced. Note, if approved, this article replaces the action taken by Article forty five at the twenty eighteen Annual Town Meeting. The questions or comments? Kathy, have some? Just to call, please just. Okay, Article Article fifty two, see if the town will vote to refund excess motor vehicle excise tax credits to the extent authorized by thirty six MRSA A fourteen eighty two five D and authorize the Board of Select Persons to pre, to pay those funds from the Undesignated Funds Fund. This authority shall remain in effect until repealed or replaced. Note, if this article is improved, replaces the action taken on Article forty seven at the twenty eighteen Annual Town Meeting. Are there questions or comments? Okay, moving on to fifty three, which is the first contingency article. To see if the town will raise an appropriate forty thousand, forty thousand three, thirty three dollars to. Start again. To see if the town will raise an appropriate forty thousand thirty three dollars to support the operational cost for the Recreation Department until March thirty one, twenty twenty. Article fifty four is required if Article three is defeated. Twenty nineteen budget for thirty seven thousand four hundred and forty six dollars. Twenty twenty actual thirty two nine eighty four. Twenty twenty request forty thousand thirty three. All this, are there questions or comment? Good. Article fifty four, see if the town will raise an appropriate twenty thousand five hundred and fif, five hundred twenty four dollars to support the operation cost of the library until March thirty first, twenty. March thirty first, twenty twenty. Article fifty five is required if Article four is defeated. Budget for twenty nineteen was fifth, was three thousand five hundred and twenty four. Twenty nineteen actual fourteen thousand six seven hundred and sixteen. One twenty request, twenty thousand five hundred twenty four. Are there questions or comments? None. One more, one more. This is the, this is the LD, LD one, so-called. See if the town will vote to increase property tax levy limit of one million five hundred thousand four hundred and seventy one dollars. Established for Belgrade by the state in the event the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax limit. And I believe we're under that limit, is that right, Anthony? Mr. Wilson, we're under the limit?
Yes.
We're under the limit, okay. Any questions or comments? No, thank you. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we conclude the warrant. Thank you very much for your attendance. Thank you very much for your attention.
Melanie's trying to talk.
Oh, Melanie.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing. Second?
Motion made as their second. Made and seconded by Kathy, you second it?
Yes.
Good. Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. One, two. Ernie, you in favor, three, okay, four. Four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Melanie, you have your hands, put your hand down now unless you have a question.